All right, it is six thirty. You would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, call for all. Here.
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 Is there any addition or amendments to the council meeting agenda for this evening?
I would like to add an executive session due into Ohio revise actually one twenty-one dot two-two G eight to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions.
Is there any other? Is there a second motion?
Say.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four?
Meeting minutes?
Say.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
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 Say.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, for the evening, we do not have any visitors in this portion of the meeting. Moving into reports. On fifteenth, I attended along with staff and present the work the annual meeting, which was downtown Columbus and talked about transportation, ways that we can continue to work together to help our community grow as Central Ohio grows. On the eighteenth, I attended the at Hudson Oliver High School along with Mr. Lewis, Mr. Harriman, the freshman opportunity project. They, every year, the freshmen have come up with items or projects that they see that they would like to be changed in their either the high school, school district, or community. And it's just amazing to hear what the students from their perspective. I can't speak for the other two council members, but I, I think that there's a lot of items that we can see offering our youth that they feel validated as, as the, you know, the elements by time into.
Yeah, it's really interesting. Some very low budget, some no budget, some were, you know, not very budget. So it was really interesting to hear, hear their stories, ideas, you know, a lot of stuff in school, clubs they wanted and stuff. So I, I got a lot out of it.
Yeah, it was nice. Plus, hey, see more days off of school, more.
Fall.
Very fall. To hear their perspective.
Like after school fishing club too. They do not have hot breakfast item option at the high school up currently and they're looking for mu- donation microwaves, which I think many of us could help to secure. So that is one project that a girl wanted to present to me and, and ask if I could help source something for the students. So that's something here after spring break that I want to help get done and other projects that they had presented. So also then on Wednesday, I was at Johnson Junior High with the eighth grade career day with choir principal Adams and Lieutenant Joffe Woods. We talked to students about, you know, their careers, of what they want to do after school. And honestly, I told them in eighth grade, I had no idea what I wanted to do. And so I hope that my story of college and a career and ending up here at mayor kind of helped to inspire them that they don't have to do just one thing, that they can do whatever they, they're might do. Working with staff, playing for Arbor Day, which is coming up here at the end of April. It was the place the elementary school, the sorcerers will be helping to plant a tree on the elementary school grounds. And also helped stuff Easter egg last week and attended the Easter egg hunt, which was a great turnout despite the chilly weather. I think that people think that we can just, you know, make it sunny, but that doesn't always happen. So also I sat in on the police interviews last Friday and was a part of that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lepton, our village manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The southeast portion of the uptown streetscape demo should be starting this week. There's a lot going on in that corner. We appreciate everybody's patience and if there's any inconveniences.
The clock tower internals were ready to pay for repairs. We hope to get that, the clock working again within the next couple of months. The Madison Meadows Playground is finishing up. Looks really great and it's really exciting next concrete and then the surface goes in. We want to use that really soon. Just a reminder, we still have solar eclipse glasses available for residents. We can stop by, those are free. And then lastly, we have some new speakers in the room today, like actual audio speakers. So we're hoping we see an increase in audio for the recorded version.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Ms. Sana, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. I will work out of the office starting tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday for my auditorium state conference. So that'll be fun, yeah.
By your conference, thank you. Chief McKee.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things. Sergeant Preiler completed critical incident stress management training. Officer Flowers completed field training, officer training. And then Officer Rubio completed report writing, courtroom testimony training. And then, I don't know if you guys noticed or not, all the flock cameras have been installed in town. We, we, we will start utilizing those here pretty soon, but it was weird because we logged on just the other day and noticed that they reported a stolen car going through town at, at a certain time as soon as it, they were installed. And then lastly, as the mayor mentioned, that we did our panel interviews for the police officer cadet position on Friday. I would like to thank Mayor and Justin and actually Mr. Bennett, who's over there in the corner, for sitting on the panel. We've extended a conditional officer offer to one of the candidates, which he accepted and, and, and once all the conditions are met, such as background investigation, polygraph, drug testing, the physical, the, the new cadet will probably start at the police department or police academy in Westerville and made it first, if he passes all those. So it's good news. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council president, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, so since our last meeting, we had a productive meetup with some of our representatives from the mid Ohio sewer district, Ms. Ferguson and I and Ms. Lepton. We also had a catch up today with Chief Kidd on potential future funding and levies and things like that. Tomorrow, Haley and I are going to chat about work session topics on the phone if anyone is interested. To be honest with you, it looks kind of light right now. The plan was to try to get in the E-DIP this month, but it's not quite ready. So right now, the only thing that we could isolate would be like the zoning code update on the signs, which is probably not enough to get us together. So we actually have an opportunity, potentially, we're not canceling yet, but if nothing comes up tonight or the next couple of days, we might actually have an opportunity to cancel the work session on Wednesday, so.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Also, I will, on the work session, if you go ahead and host it, I'll be at the Johnton Alder. Envisioning education meeting. I wouldn't be there.
Those should cancel if you're not.
Right, exactly. Not that I, well, special meetings are not for me, it's for council, so, but I just want to put that out there.
We just don't have a lot this month. Probably going to mean we're going to have a bigger one.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mr. Lafayette, our law director.
I don't have any report except that probably about twelve items we should have an immediate for the next work session.
Thank you, Mr. Lafayette. Economic Development Committee, Ms. Ferguson.
Yes, we met on February twenty-seventh. Stanford got the committee up to speed on several topics, which included most of what council is already aware of. The murder of the communications and communications and marketing committee with the Economic Development Committee. Possible establishment of Plain City Downtown Revitalization District, which we'll be hearing about this evening. Tiff District, latest update on an economic development incentive policy and update on potential one sixty-one court. The committee, I thought, was pretty excited that Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. Stanford threw out some potential incentives. But I don't know that they're ready to talk about it. It will come to council eventually, but it was just nice to get some feedback from the committee. We're in preliminary, you know, just preliminary thoughts on that. Our next meeting is tomorrow at eleven.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. BZA.
Yes, Mayor. This past meeting, they passed, I guess, a sign approval for colors furniture. Kind of update a product sign to replace there existing one they have. They'll still keep the landscape and make it look nice. With the potential changes with the sign code coming anyways, it would fit into what's coming probably here in a couple of weeks or a couple of months when that, that passes through. And up for April tenth, we have one additional use for business going for the, for, for use up there.
Thank you, Mr. Harriman. Planning and zoning met March twentieth, so last week about the updates to the sign code. We started that conversation, Mr. Hutchinson introduced it. We had a discussion about neighborhood lighting and what does that look like for our future neighborhoods for safety purposes? And Mr. Hutchinson informed planning commission of, you know, that the village is in charge of the electricity once the, the lights are in the neighborhood, so we need to think about that as well. And planning commission passed the, approved the preliminary plan for Beechey Farms, so which will be seen on the agenda this evening. Final, sorry, sorry, final, oh my goodness, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, final development. I, my apologies. Thank you. So we passed the final development plan, so it's coming to you on the agenda this evening. With that, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Sins.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the big thing that was already announced, that we already talked about, the Easter egg hunt. Parks and Rec posted a video today, so if you want to see a recap, you weren't able to get out there for the thousand, one thousand-ish attendees and nine thousand eggs, right? Is that right? I thought I had a bag of a million when I had to go put those on the ground. And there were like eighteen of those bags, so. There were a lot of, lot of eggs and a good, a good attendance. Madison Meadows Playground, you heard that it's been installed. Gosh, I'm going to go down my list, you guys ticked off all of them. The Aquatic Center, the pools drained and being prepped for painting in the next couple of weeks. And do I move down to the Tree Commission?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Tree City USA official? We are official Tree City USA. So big shout out to Denton Kits, so he did a lot of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sins. Personnel, Finance and CIP.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Nothing too much to report beyond the discussions with the, the funding and then also the good news about the interviews on Friday. So that's brother there.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Fireboard.
Our meeting is next Thursday at the Firehouse, right? Yeah. Yeah. So I get to say, well, we haven't had a meeting since then. I could do rules committee because.
Yes, go ahead.
The final reading of the rule. The agenda tonight, so that can be removed going from the agenda as committee that is going away.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Terry.
I don't know if we have to do anything to make it go away. With this ban of a committee or if we just stop meeting?
I think under our rules, it terminates upon submission of the report.
I, I do that. Didn't we write?
Rules, right?
Correct.
You, Mr. Lafayette, Mr. Terry. Mr. U Daily, Plain City Area Development Corporation.
We met on the thirteenth and we received cooperation on technically official state. We also read through the code of regulations that we'll have with our group. And so we went through that and, and we, remember that was brought on from, so that was good. Nice as well that we have someone that was well, that's involved. Our next meeting is on the tenth. It's in the morning, eight, at nine thirty. Eight thirty.
Thank you, Mr. U Daily. Moving into our discussion items, we have the Downtown Revitalization District.
Should we discuss this after public hearing?
We can move that to after.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
If I may just say something.
Yeah. Yeah.
So just to back up a little bit, so we received an application from the DRC about, I was here on Valentine Day, I think, seventeen. We're required as part of the ORC to schedule a public hearing about the DRC. So that's really what tonight's public hearing is about, some guests can obviously listen to feedback and then that kind of stuff that you want. Just keep in mind that I will be presenting, making a formal presentation to council either on the eighth or the twenty-second. So I will have more information to share, also taking the feedback that we received tonight than other conversations and providing that to you. So I just want you to keep in mind that it will be more information coming, you know.
Fair.
So do we want to move our discussion time until after that?
The problem, so we posted the public hearing. We have, we, we, it will come to speak, so we're, we can't move that.
No, no, no.
To another meeting?
We could table our discussion.
That's fine, I'm one hundred percent.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to table the discussion?
Motion to table the D.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passed six to, six to nothing to table the discussion on the Downtown Revitalization District. Our next discussion topic is Plain City Military Heroes Banner Program and Policy.
So with that, obviously, what, Harry or so, I think the work session kind of presented that. Mr. James, people to you a little bit because he, he took the lead with that, put that in. I think he was already starting to work with it. But make work a little harder. And he's sending, I think, the package, the information. He said, the B. Sorry. Was it? I can't remember because we have BFW, LJAC, I forget which. LJAC came, that was what, two or three weeks ago that we kind of mess with that and then presented it to them. They were definitely favored, were very supportive of us moving forward with this program, that would be a streetscape. So with that, since you prepared most of the work, I'm sure that's our sharing.
Yeah, I can share some information this evening. I do believe you all have a packet of information applications, background, you know. But yeah, really excited to present this program for consideration. Chauvin, Herrmann mentioned this a minute ago. This came, it had been on our radar for a while, but it just came to light in February, so we were able to put something together with that all of the American Legion post two forty-eight. What we are doing is basically opening up a banner program, activation program to any veteran or activities or is number, who has lived in Plain City or currently resides in Plain City. So this is really cool, it's very inclusive. Basically, what this entails is that each banner will have the individual's name, their branch of service, the years of service, and also a photograph. Okay, so it'll be two-sided, color, very bright and vibrant. Again, have copies there. Again, open to all races of military. We will be displaying these during the Johntop days, May and the War Day, and then later in the year, probably around the end of the day for now. Basically, just to see how the banners wear, you know, if we do okay, you know, summer's a little bit rough on the banners on town, but we can at least get them off and start a little more thing. What we are proposing is basically a, a very close to cost neutral payment for this. So applicants can basically buy a banner for seventy-five dollars. You can buy it, it costs about sixty-eight dollars for us to actually put banners, so you can have them. So there's a little bit of room in there. And for anybody who's interested in sponsoring, it can be family members and we keep that wide open, so it could be cousins, the uncles, you know, et cetera. And then after one year, they do receive that banner back, so they will have that to either keep or give to the actual person. A lot of discussion entailed, what is an outlet, outlet at all persons? So obviously, as we talked, it is military, that is having duty of the reserve components, have the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard or Space Force. Honorings have to be, have had been honorably discharged. And it really goes back to how many banners are available and they have a hundred, I think we have about nineteen or twenty street poles that will have banners on them. So of course, as streetscape is improved throughout the next couple of years, we'll add more to the banner program. Not only getting into all the details on this, I mean, there's certain things that the applicants have to file, such as status, or obviously some kind of evidence that they served in the military. We will take it from there, same with the photographs. Obviously, you know, we do understand that a lot of photographs now from the early military campaigns may be dated, so we'll try and test work with those photos even if you have to page the, to the trainers and have them kind of tweak it a little bit or kind of make it updated. So the process for the village, what this is for us, what this means for us, is that we are leading this program in partnership with the American Legion, so they graciously decided or agreed to partner with us. And basically, we will administer the program, but they will review all the applicants that we receive. So it's a great partnership for us. Obviously, the American Legion is very well connected into the military community here as well, so they know, you know, what's going on and who's who. So obviously, we do reserve the right to enter discretion, to reject, and delay acceptance. We have to include that in there and don't anticipate any issues in case there's something that pops up, we reserve that, right? Basically, if the honorary is deceased, recognition must be approved by the closest local representative. So we want to make sure that we are in a healthy living, but also. And it's really easy, we have information on our website. So we will have information on the website, the application, it will be on the website, some programming details. We would ask that people who are invested can fill out an application, return to the municipal. They'll make payment, but then also turn in the supporting documents, the photos, things like that. The only thing is that we do require cash, check or money or a payment, not credit cards. We're unable to accept credit cards at this time, but that'll be something we look for into the future. So right now, because this is the inaugural year, we, you know, ask that we have patience, or that the community has patience to see how this kind of rolls out. We were able to base a lot of this on other communities around the region have similar programs. We're, we're pretty comfortable with where we're headed on this, but there might be things that pop up along the line that we don't anticipate, but we're pretty comfortable moving forward. So that being said, I will entertain any questions or comments.
So I noticed it the other day, just as I was looking, I think some stuff I think came from the conversations. I. First tab.
Yes.
That, that was kind of when we were here meeting with them. You know, we were saying, hey, we could use our, you know, website for veterans.
And I saw you put the link in there.
That adds resources for veterans to get at as well as more of the FFW adding a, a contact place for them as they develop their website. And then I saw the banner burning link was on there, so. Just, you know, we had very positive conversations with the FFW coming here with getting this partnership. As I said, you know, I didn't serve, Jason didn't serve, so we said, hey, we're kind of looking at you guys to really be involved with the program. We're like, hey, we're going to be offering, you know, the streetscape for this, you know, to, you know, be involved with this, to honor them.
Some logistics questions. So assuming we get an old photograph and heaven forbid something happened to that photograph in the process, well, I'm assuming we're going to have liability statements in there.
That's a great point. We will add that. My intention honestly is before they leave this building, they will get that photograph back because we have a really quality scanner in the office, but we will, we will address that.
Also, the banner won't be up all year long, it's going to be up for holidays. At the end of the year, if, if, if we submit, if they want to have them honored for a second year, they've got to go through the process again, or is it just pay a renewal fee? That's not the right word, but you know.
That's a, that's a great consideration. We're not quite sure what the response will be. So right now, we do think that we'll have enough to get us through the next two years.
Okay.
So chances are, we wouldn't entertain people coming back year after year. So it would probably be at least a year off and then we would entertain that for the following year. So that, that's definitely on our radar, just something we quite can't answer right now.
And that's, those are my only questions. Outside of my question, I think it's a fantastic program for our, I have those banners up in our downtown.
I think, you know, where we kind of came up with one year, we were having discussion, I think initially was two years, especially if the banners are up, because, you know, really during the holidays, we're hoping they don't get too damaged by the sun so the idea was two years, but since we're limited to our streetscapes right now of only being, what, nineteen, I think is what we said. I think we were, as the group, as we're, you know, we, we felt we would have more than nineteen applicants. And, you know, especially for some of our older military veterans from, if they were in World War Two or, or Vietnam, you know, we didn't want two years, you know, have that person be on the twenty, and, you know, two years kind of being a pre, could be a preseason. But probably with the numbers that one year was, was to see what we're at. And just like I said, we don't know, so I think that timeframe may shift and banners would withstand the weather. Finding out for renewals or, yeah. Have to look at that as we go forward.
We'll be able to roll it out this year because I think you said fifteen. People will be able to get this stuff approved, I just want to make sure that we're not saying, you know, we said fifteen and all of a sudden we break that for this year, people love the program, but I just want to make sure we can hit that, that we can get this year.
Our goal will absolutely be to get as many participants before Memorial Day as we can at this point. Even if we have to keep the application open this first year, we will do that, take them on case by case. And then by November, Veterans Day, we'll have hopefully everybody, so.
People should know that this is happening.
Yes, that's a great question. So we realize that not everybody, especially in that demographic, are online or they have, you know, the app and things like that. So we will be working closely with the American Legion to get word out directly to the families. But we will also hope that our media partners in the room will, will help us out with that. Word of mouth, and then obviously social media as well.
Yeah. Get that, because like you said, it's.
Great program and thank you everybody for making, for research and bringing it to our community. We had a question.
Yes. If we have, if we have more applicants than, so, perfect. How, how are we determining or is determining who's the most deserving of all?
Yes, we had great discussions about this, especially with our partners, American Legion. We're going to kind of leave it up to them a little bit. Obviously, our first preference is village residents. We even had the discussions that Plain City today is a lot bigger than it was, say, in the nineteen forties before World War Two. So as long as they were a resident of Plain City at the time that they were residents of Plain City, we will honor that. They'll be first preference. Second preference for us again would be Jonathan Alder District or whatever the Plain City District was at the time. So we have different levels. And then if not, we will obviously entertain a waitlist.
Thank you, Stanford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Time to open up the hearing or create a downtown revitalization district for the village. And I have one who has spoken, Frank Grace Robinson, to see. And I have one who has spoken, Frank Grace Robinson, to speak.
Swear the whole truth, nothing but the truth here.
So help you God. And also, do I have a time?
No.
I've been cutting that before. Always. It's not when you get up here too, like you're in front of the firing squad, so. First and foremost, thanks for letting us come tonight, and really thanks for the time. And thinking outside of the box and willingness to explore some of these opportunities for the uptown, I think it's important. But I know it takes a ton of time and resources, right? And so I know that that's pretty limited in today's world. So whether it's Jason having meetings, or Haley supporting, or Jody supporting and whatnot, it's important that we're all wrapping around some of these cool initiatives that we're exploring in the future. And so we just wanted to call that out. Appreciate the collaboration. So the purpose of this whole revitalization district from this lens, maybe not from some others, is that, you know, the purpose was that we had an ask from a potential tenant. In the new building, right, for the third floor, which is an incredible asset, right? She is from a unique small town that has done some really cool creative things as well, which is awesome. And our response to that is really about protecting the asset. Obviously, that building is incredible. It's looking amazing. We appreciate the support of the sidewalk project and all those other things. But at the end of the day, we have financial duties and obligations, right? fiduciary responsibility. And so our support of that application, that ask from Gretchen Bonisera with the third-story tenant, was to support her and support her asset and support our responsibility. Right? You know, that's, that's a big knot that we have to fill every month, right? At ten thousand dollars with electric and the mortgage and all those things, and we're doing the best that we can to fulfill that. What's really exciting is that, you know, having new people come in, new businesses come in, present new opportunities that maybe some of us wouldn't otherwise explore, right? It just comes from experience and different backgrounds and those kinds of things. And what it's done is it's really created additional collaboration and conversation amongst the village and us. Us and other business owners and tenants and building owners all around the uptown, which has been really awesome. So I want to thank them as well for their time. Eric's here, Tim's here. We've had a lot of discussions and meetings behind the scenes, because that's how the uptown collaboration should work. And we've battled through a lot of things together. And so thank you guys for collaborating on this as well and giving your perspective and working with us to do the right thing for the village of Plain City. So, you know, restaurants and businesses certainly rejuvenate and expedite revitalization and downtown growth. In any city, any village, any, you know, deprived area, et cetera, so restaurants and foot traffic, increase spend and spend increases excitement around the village and all those kinds of things. So we don't want to like degrade that, studies show that, and we want to increase spend here, et cetera. So long-term, we think that the revitalization district is probably something to consider. So, but today, after collaborating with other business and building owners in the village and doing our own research, frankly, within the last two hours. And all the possibilities, you know, we explored something about transporting one license to us from another entity, and what that possibility might look like. And we're thankful for that exploration and discovery. We've also explored, you know, what's the most cost-effective way to do that, right? And understanding the risks versus the rewards. And so with a revitalization district, frankly, we're probably under the impression that it's probably not the right thing to do right now. So as I stand here in this moment, within the last two hours, we've actually come to the realization it's probably not the right thing for Plain City right now. And that's fine, because what it's done again is probably brought us together, created more collaboration, created more opportunity, opened eyes to possibilities and those kinds of things. So we're going to officially, in this moment, and I apologize to the whole village of Plain City to some degree, for wasting some of the time and resources that are put into this. And putting this on the docket. It's not easy. Petals have erasers for a reason. And when you erase, you don't, that's, it's not white out, right? You don't just, you can't see anything. You can still see the remnants of that, and that's great. So I guess our, our position is like, you know, it's not, it's not for naught, right? Great. We have a lot of good discussions. We realized that, hey, there's probably not as many benefits as we probably thought from the get-go. We're thankful for all those discussions, but it's probably a really good idea for all of us to get together and go explore towns like Belle Fountain with Jason Duff, who have done this, right? Two to three years from now, right? And think about the impact that this could have down the line, because just, just because it's not good today doesn't mean it won't be good later, right? So let's go to Belle Fountain, let's create some opportunities, collaborate, go explore, interview other places, Urbana's done this, Powell's done this, et cetera. But they're probably a little bit more mature than we are, right? And so I just want to like, we've done all this effort, we've done all this research, we've had these discussions, it's great. We realize it's not the right time. We apologize to all of you for bringing this, but we did it in the best interest of a tenant. It's a suffice and need to protect an asset, right? And do the right things, and I think part of owning some of the responsibility in this community is also owning when maybe things don't fit, right? And it's kind of humbling to stand up sometimes and say that out loud, because we're not all perfect. And I still don't think it's really a bad thing. It's just the timing. It's probably just not the right timing, right? So I just, I wanted to get up here and kind of own some of that, but also highlight the collaboration and the appreciation and what this has all meant over the last two to three weeks. Four weeks since we've actually gone through this, and just let you know that it's all good. And I don't know what the official process is to pull the application from the docket, but we probably need to explore that, is just doing this part of that process.
No, I think you have to kneel down.
I would never, no, no, you're just, that's really awkward.
Just advise us that you're withdrawing it. Just to advise that you're withdrawing it.
Okay.
And you can, I think, I don't think we have any paperwork that needs to be filled out, other than just, you know, you might want to send an email or something.
You can just say delete.
Just for the purposes of.
Our record.
Just an email or something to that, back to Mr. Or.
Cool, all right. So, yeah, all right. So what we're going to do, frankly, is we're going to track a license in. Not, not we, I actually shouldn't restate that. I do not own that business. I'm not a freaking operator of that business. So we're not, we're going to, we're going to advise that Gretchen, the actual establishment, the tenant, is going to track a license in, which actually I think is still beneficial to Plain City. From a DORA perspective and all those components that I think some others were excited about, and what that would bring to Plain City. So I don't think all is lost in that perspective either. So I think there's still a win, you know, globally with some exciting things and creating collaboration, just kind of this environment out of like growth. Without actually inviting like freaking Applebee's to come into Plain City or somebody like that, right? So that's, that's our intent. So we're going to pull it. I'll send you an email following this meeting. We want to protect Plain City. We didn't necessarily understand the impact that that would have coming from our lens and the village's lens. So that's, that's our intent, so. Any questions at all? What the purpose of this is.
I think if anything, you've opened up our eyes to something that can be a tool of the future if we wanted to go that direction. But we also learned about it. I don't think many of us knew anything about what this, what, you know, BRD would be, so I know.
So much on that liquor.
Dude, tell me about it. Like, I don't know crap about that.
No, but it's something I've never, I never knew about. I read this weekend.
I needed that information, so.
Yeah, that's my whole point, right? Like, it's, we've wasted a lot of time, but is it really a waste? Probably not, if you think about it. And this guy over here probably knows more than any of us about liquor laws. I consulted him seven ways to sundown there the last two weeks on that front, right? And we tried to get creative on something, it just didn't work. It's all good, right? But we all grew and we learned, right?
What I, what I really like is just the, you, you three or whoever, people got together and talked about and talked through it as people are invested in the development of, of the village. So I, I love that part of it. I didn't see that part initially.
You read the, you read the transcripts from like a year ago.
No, I didn't, a year ago, but, so I, I didn't see that part initially, and so hearing you say that, I really appreciate that effort, you know, that partnership stuff.
Well, I think one of the, one of the biggest takeaways in those conversations was like, hey, we're, we're all going to, we're, Plain City's growing. We can't, we're not, we're not going to stop that. But creating a new pie that's even bigger before we really should might not be the best interest of Plain City, right? So we can still accomplish the DORA, we can still accomplish this cool environment where we're bringing like high clientele to uptown Plain City that spend, you know, maybe more than what traditional people spend, whatever, at a private membership club or something like that. It doesn't have to be the Applebee's or a BW threes or Roosters or something like that that does that. And we want to protect the locally grown aspect of Plain City as much as we can. I think that's one of our biggest takeaways is the threesome over here, is that the uniqueness of these smaller entities is, is, is more important than just bringing in like the fastest dollar or something that turns over. That's where we're coming from.
I, I echo Mr. Lewis's sentiments. I, that, if anything, that bringing the three major building owners together to collaborate is, is my books. And I look at our uptown and it looks amazing and excited for the future, so with that, I'll, are you?
I'm good. I just, I just want to make sure everybody's good. Like, I apologize for wasting some of your time and resources and your support in certain things, and that's not the intent, right? So.
No.
Can't bow to thousands.
And I just want to say, you, all three of you guys are in the room, you know, I think when you go back to your properties in Plain from twenty sixteen, whatever it was, of the downtown coming back together, I think the investments that. You three good gentlemen and your partners have done there is, you know, kind of fulfilling. I think probably what most of the residents want to see there is, is that a lot nicer drive this town, seeing all the work that's been done on all those buildings, you know. All of you guys, you know, local here and have. Look, we're having businesses here, so I appreciate that, and I'd like to see that as long as we can, and it's my stuff local.
And with that, just to make sure, is anybody else here to speak upon that public hearing? Mr. Medici?
Ten seconds.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, I think it's a really great idea. I don't have any tenants lined up who could pick up the mantle and try to, to run a bit. But I think, long-term, I think it gives us options. It gives the village options. I think it's a good idea, and I came here to support race, so I kind of got caught on the side. Didn't, didn't see it coming either, but I just wanted to say that I do think it opens up options, and I think that's what we all need to keep up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing on the downtown revitalization district. And I just want to clarify, on the agenda, it says preliminary development plan, but it's final. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, I know, final development plan, so that's where. Oh, this is correct. Oh, my, I am.
Because, because everything was waiting on the annexation.
Okay.
You are approving, and I know it sounds a little backwards, but yes, you're approving the pre, the preliminary development plan, even though the final development plan has been approved.
Final development plan does not come from council.
So we're just catching up to the other way for the annexation to go through before everything get opened up with the reason we have to do this. So this is for.
Yes, okay, just, I am, I was going to say, the sunshine is messing with my mind today, so I apologize. Okay, is there a motion to approve PUD dash twenty-three dash ten preliminary development plan for Beechey Farms?
I will motion.
I will second.
I'm abstaining from property.
Genius.
Yes.
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 Motion to approve PUD dash twenty-three dash ten passes five to one extension. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance nine dash twenty-two four, rezoning one hundred and thirty-six point nine five acres at zero U S forty-two parcels, number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-two-nine. Number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine dot zero-zero-one and number zero-two dot zero-zero-zero-two-nine dot zero-zero-two from Darby Township Agricultural District A one to planned unit development PUD.
So moved.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Sence.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Same.
Ordinance nine dash twenty-two four passes five to one extension. Second reading resolution thirteen dash twenty-two four adopting the rules of council.
So moved.
Yes.
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 Rule, resolution thirteen dash twenty-two four passes.
In the rules, there's no third.
Moving into new business, first reading resolution fourteen dash twenty-two four, amending the pastime park campground rules policy. Is there a sense of urgency on this?
I, I would say no. I mean, we could go through a second.
First reading resolution fifteen dash twenty-two four, creating the Plain City Military Heroes Banner Program and Policy.
I would motion to read the second reading just for typing to get the program going since we may be closing in.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sence.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Resolution fifteen, or.
Motion to. Motion fifteen twenty-two four.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution fifteen dash twenty-two four passes. First reading resolution sixteen dash twenty-two four, authorizing and directing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the village of West Jefferson Department of Development. First reading resolution seventeen dash twenty-two four, acting in accordance with Ohio revised code one twenty, one twenty-eight dot zero-eight to approve the Union County nine-one-one final plan. And we, will we be coming back with any? No, we will not be coming back for further business. So this concludes our public portion of our council meeting this evening. We are about to move into executive session pursuant to Ohio Rice Code, section one twenty-one dot two-two G eight, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions. Is there a motion? Second.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.